I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. We'll start off with roll call. Dan Rodenhouse?
Here.
John Lestridge?
Bridgette Hayes, I'm here.
Curtis Ward is not here. Rick Whitaker?
Here.
We do have a quorum. Let's start with the approval of the minutes of the regular meeting and the special meeting. This is from... Regular meeting July 15th and the special meeting on July 24th. Is there a motion to approve?
I make a motion to approve both of them.
John made a motion to approve both. Is there a second? Dan seconded. Is there any discussion or changes Regina? All in favor? All opposed? Motion carried. Next is approval of the claims. The total for the claims this month is $861,429. Are there any questions Regina? Is there a motion to approve the claims?
I'd make that motion.
John made a motion to approve claims. Is there a second? Rick seconded. All in favor? All opposed? Motion carried. Next, we have two payrolls. Payroll ending 7/19/24 is a total of $61,882.91. And the payroll ending August 2nd is $62,644.46. Is there a motion to approve both payrolls?
I'd make that motion.
John made a motion to approve the payrolls. Is there a second? Rick seconded. All in favor? All opposed?
Favor.
All in favor? Motion carried. Okay, first on the list is the REEDY group.
I would like the... I would like the town to hire the REEDY group to do a study at the golf course from the time the town purchased it to now. See if we're making money, losing money, breaking even.
Is there a second?
Second.
John is there? So now it's time for discussion. Is there a reason why you don't just talk to a local accountant in town? Because this doesn't involve any...
I would like for an accountant out of town. The county's had a good run with REEDY group. They're all happy with them. So I'd like to get REEDY group in.
Right, so what I was saying was, the golf course doesn't really have any kind of, you know, municipal type of funding that's associated with it, that we fund it. You know, there's not like a rules besides the general fund. It's more like a... Are you okay?
Yeah, I just don't understand.
Okay. It's... It could be just looked at like a recreational area that a local accountant could look at at a much lower price than REEDY group is what I'm trying to say.
My motion stands.
Do you have an estimate for this?
No, I haven't talked to them yet.
But your motion said that you won't hire them?
Yes.
Without knowing how much it's going to cost?
I'll talk to them, see if they are not over expensive for the county for what they get. I think we'll be okay.
Right, but this body has to approve the funding. And your motion is to approve... Is not to approve a dollar amount, it's just to approve an open contract?
Yeah.
And Dan, you're okay with just approving any dollar amount that they put on the table?
One of the biggest questions I get is golf course and how much money we're reducing or making. And the number that I've seen last year, I don't feel comfortable with those. So I would like to outside looking to say, yes, you're going to. Because I don't think all that I see is all the most important areas. Again, even golfing, if it's ten million dollars, we're not interested.
Right, but this, that motion...
But typically, the organization goes a chemical tour. We go on and then we go forward. Sometimes I don't work that way. But that's what I think we're doing here.
No, the motion was not to approve a dollar amount on invoice or an estimate. The motion was to approve them doing the work without knowing the dollar amount. That's what I'm trying to prevent. I'm not even sure if that's legal. Are we allowed to even do this legally?
We wouldn't be able to hire them if there's not an agreement to be signed.
If that be signed, you...
Yeah, I mean, but the dollar...
Did you say it doesn't have to be...
The dollar don't need necessary because you need to know where and from, how much it is and things like that.
I won't know how much it is till I talk to them. I can bring that back when we sign the agreement.
So would you amend your motion to just say...
I don't have to.
Well, to be... To describe what's going to happen a little more clear, you would only be engaging them to get an agreement and get an invoice to look at the golf course.
Okay.
Instead of just approving them.
That's my motion.
The motion is what? If you might... Sorry.
To talk to the REEDY group and get a contract and bring it back and have the council approve.
Okay, just for the golf course?
Just for golf course.
I'm going to assume that's an amended motion. Are you going to second that amended motion?
Sure.
Is there any... Rick, do you have any input or discussion?
No, I think it just needs to be done. I think it needs to be done so we can just put this to rest. Because that is one thing that everyone wants to know. Does the golf course make a money? Well, let's just get it out and open and be done with it.
All in favor of the motion to engage REEDY to get an agreement and invoice to study the golf course? All in favor? All opposed? Motion carried three to one Regina?
Can I ask a question?
Yeah, because first of all, I think Regina does an amazing job on the financials. And I also have learned recently that that financial statement is pretty much 95% of a normal profit and loss statement that most businesses have to run their business. The only thing that we were missing is the interest on the lease bond. And Gina and I talked about that and she's engaged Baker Tilly, our actual client. I mean, Baker Tilly and REEDY are in competition with each other. And we've used Baker Tilly in Brookfield for years. So she engaged Baker Tilly in order to help her figure out what the actual interest would be for the golf course since the lease bond was included, the purchase of the golf course in the Zimmer building. And so I don't know, Gina, have you heard back from them on that yet?
No, I have another matter I need to reach out to her on, so I'm going to speak with her on Thursday.
On Thursday, okay. So she's going to talk to her about that. But that's the only piece of the pod that's about $20,000, $20,000 to $25,000 of interest that we should be including on that. If we call it a profit and loss statement in the future, that's what it should be. But profit and loss statements do not include the principal of any loan amount. That's usually kept on a balance sheet, is from what I understand from talking with people. And so that's what I just learned recently, and that's why I just talked to Gina about it, include that interest. And then we'll give people a true profit and loss statement. But I also think that engaging a competitor to Baker Tilly and engaging someone and not using our local accountants that maybe would do it for free because it's in their county and maybe they like the golf course. I don't know. Or at least give us a break on it because it's only a profit and loss statement of a recreational area. It's not necessarily municipal financing. And so that's why I don't think we should spend this type of money on that. I think that we should use the local people that we have here who love this town to help us. So, thank you for asking. Next issue is the Main Street Brookfield Chicken Fest.
So Brookfield Main Street would like to ask permission to close Court Street for Chicken Fest, which is Saturday, September 14th. Christine, do you have anything to add?
Um, no, but that's just what we're asking it would be for all day as in previous years.
That's a... It's a fourth street of State Avenue?
Court.
Court. Oh, Court Street, sorry.
Yeah, Court Street.
And Christine, is there any other, besides closing the road and I'm assuming setting up blockades?
I think that's where they, you know, I, this would be my first year with Chicken Fest. I think that's where they set up all the fryers, is out there. So, and it's just safer for folks going back and forth from, you know, the pie in the air and that kind of stuff. So, but that's where the fryers are set up, are back there.
Yeah, what I was going to ask the question is, is there anything else, any other resources we need from the town for that event?
At this point, other than maybe the, like, the trash truck like before, you know, like we use for the eclipse so that we can empty the trash cans and stuff as the day progresses and have somewhere to put the trash.
Who did the trash truck? Tim or Gina, do you know? Was that the street department or...
I mean, maybe it was the street department. Christine, was that the street department? Because I don't remember.
I think Brock, he set that up for us, so yeah. He brought that over and dropped it off, you know, behind the courthouse for the eclipse event. And there were trash bags in the path of the truck and stuff so that we could empty the cans as the day went, you know, through. And then we had somewhere to put all the trash in the back of the truck. And so I'm pretty... Brock is the one I talked to about it and who gave me info, so.
So trash truck and barricades also?
Yes, yeah.
And then is... Are you anticipating traffic issues that we need to make the police aware? Any traffic issues or is this not a traffic issue for that?
I don't know. Like I said, it's my first Chicken Fest. And I know there's, you know, a good number of folks that come for that. But I mean, we will let, you know, we should let the police department know that that's going on that day and just to kind of have an eye out. But I don't see any traffic issues coming from that.
Okay, thank you. Anybody have any questions or motion for this event?
I make a motion to approve the closing of Court Street and the trash truck barricades.
John made a motion to approve the September 14th Brookfield Chicken Fest closure of Court Street. Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor? All opposed? Motion carried. Next is the Main Street Brookfield door signs.
So Main Street Brookfield is in charge of the signage for Dora. Today I got a email from Rand Noah requesting some funding. He estimated maybe $2,000 to get the signage for the door up in town. I didn't know if council would go ahead and pre-approve that amount or...
I think if we approve it, I think we can be reimbursed by a refund if they need it right away.
I think he just wanted the funding secured so he could go ahead and proceed with ordering. So he's...
Is that number solid? You can do it not to exceed, no?
No, that number is not solid.
He said that's the... He said the...
Not to exceed 2,500.
Does anybody have any comments on the signs? Are you good with the signs? Do we need to give him any feedback on those?
I don't know about the signs, but one of the emails discussed the trash receptacles outside the businesses. Can we have one of the trash and recycling? Because them cups will be recyclable.
They will?
Yeah.
Christine, are the... I thought you said they're solo cups. Are they, I didn't know they were recyclable.
I think they're recyclable.
Are they recyclable?
They are reci... Yes, they are recyclable. So, yeah, yeah.
So, did you have a plan on outside? I mean, this is not, I don't think the trash receptacles... Is the town responsible for trash receptacles outside each business, Christine? Or was that planned the business owner?
I would think that would be honestly the business owner on that one. But that's something that we at Main Street can talk about and see what, you know, we can work together with the town if the business owners... I mean, we're planning on having a meeting with all the business owners and public will be invited. And that's the kind of stuff we can touch base on and button down those details. Those are things that... There's going to be things that pop up for the first six months of Dora being active that we'll have to figure out, I'm sure. Things that we just didn't think about. Or talk to other towns and, you know, maybe not have those same issues because every town and city is different. But, yeah, I would think that honestly, I personally think that would be the proprietor, the businesses. But we can talk about that at the meeting too. And get feedback.
Are you good with that?
Yeah, yeah. I was just curious.
Yeah. Talk about...
Good question.
Okay. Did anybody... I'm sorry, John, did you make a motion to approve 2,500?
Not to exceed 2,500.
Not to exceed 2,500 for the signs. Is there a second on that?
Second.
Rick seconded. All in favor? All opposed? Motion carried. Just while we're still on Dora, is everybody okay with having that public meeting? I know I sent something out about inviting the Alcohol Tobacco Commission. Is everybody okay with that? That we post that or whatever with Main Street? And the next question is about the Dora website. You know, Main Street asked me to put that together and I did, but I sent it to you guys. Were you... Were you able to take a look at it?
I don't know that I got it yet.
So...
The emails are a little bit weird.
Yeah. Well, I made a web, a page on our, on the Brookfield dot I N dot gov, main website. The Dora, the Dora web is just a page on it. It's under Community Resources. And if you click on it, all it does is give you information about Dora. And the Main Street people intend on creating a QR code from that and then printing it on their stickers that go on the cups and printing it on the signs that'll be up on the sidewalks. But it'll be our page that we maintain and update as necessary with changes in Dora.
If I may, Bridgette, on the email that Brian sent and he sent that attachment with the signage, the QR code that is on there works and goes straight to your web, you know, your page on your website. And it looks good. So it's a good addition to the, to your website.
So, I just wanted the council to weigh in on the website. Do you think it's a good idea? Do you want us to move it to somewhere else?
Fine.
Fine? Okay. Great. Next is the Wounded Warrior Project request for donations.
So Steve Powell, Gary Dorfheim are requesting a gift certificate for one round of golf plus another to great friends. So I guess possibly two rounds of golf for their auction at the Eagles, which would benefit the Wounded Warrior Project.
And do you have any idea if that's a local thing or is that a national thing?
I've made this show a little at other than that, I didn't ask. I just get the request. I have their contact numbers if anybody will search out some.
Sticker. Anybody have any questions?
I make a motion to approve that.
John motion to approve the two rounds of golf? John approved two rounds of golf for Wounded Warrior Project for a basket donation. Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor? All opposed? Motion carried? Okay. Next is the town manager issue. I asked Gina to put this on there because we did get 23 applications from putting it on Indeed and getting it through an email from our, I hope, from our advertiser in the paper. And so the next question that I asked the council is who they would prefer to set up the phone interviews for, like we did last time? And I think John has something to say.
I'd like to make a motion to suspend the search for a town manager until next year.
And could you explain why or...
I've talked to incoming council members and I've talked to current council members. And if we hired someone this year, it will not be reappointed next year. So it's crazy to go make somebody jump through those hoops and just have a job for maybe two months. So I think it's time to suspend it until next year and see what we can come up with.
So you're saying that incoming council members have told you they will not reappoint any town manager? They told you that? Did they...
They are, they are against the town manager completely.
Unfortunately, you only have, I mean, you, you... I would, I would hope that you would just be speaking for yourself, John, because the two new council members aren't here to actually tell us that, so...
Well, I know you talked to one and I can bring in message. I can bring in whatever you want, but take it from me. I'm not a deceitful person. Take it from me that it won't work. And we can't make somebody jump through all those hoops and not work. I would hate that. I've looked for jobs before and I would just hate to jump through all that for no reason.
So this just became an issue just like last week? Because we voted on this to put the application, to put the advertisement out just last month. So I'm just, I'm trying to, I'm trying to understand the reversal. Because we have been working on this town manager and this council has voted numerous times on the duty descrip, on the description, on the advertisement. The first time, we interviewed people. We brought them in. We even made an offer to someone. I just feel like there's something that... It doesn't seem right that all of a sudden that we would just cancel this because this council, this town, taxpayers have spent a lot of money investing in this by using, by paying for all the actions that we've already approved this year. And if we're doing this, this is now a waste of taxpayer dollars.
If we hired one and paid him or her a couple of months and then we don't have one again, that's a waste of taxpayer money.
Right, but you can't, you can't guarantee that that's going to happen.
Why don't we put this to a vote now and continue where you're...
Is there, can you, can you explain the...
I have, and I'm not saying anymore.
Can you explain how this is okay with you about wasting taxpayer dollars, John? Or does it matter to you?
Bridgette, I cannot speak to you. You keep saying the same, saying the, you know, no. So I'm not, we can take it to a vote. I'm not saying anymore.
Would anyone else like to have a discussion or did you guys...
Yes, we talked before. Is that true? Is that what you guys...
My question is going to be, was this decided before this meeting occurred? Or would you like to have a discussion?
I didn't vote for it last time.
Dan, would you like to have any more discussion?
No, I think it makes sense not just to wait for two. I've not talked to the individuals, but if we truly are put settled for two months or three months, makes no sense to look at it again.
And can you, can you guarantee that the new council members are going to vote no?
I haven't talked to them.
Okay. I just caution this, this council of making, wasting taxpayer dollars like we have based off of something that no one can guarantee. I think it's our job, if we, if we voted for a town manager and we, we put it in our code, that, that we would be serious about planning on.
Well, I don't mean this is a special few about wasting taxpayer money, but I'm willing to deal with it.
Of course, I'd be willing to talk about wasting taxpayer dollars, Dan. This is a complete waste. Is there a second to John's motion to, this is suspend for the entire year, John?
Second.
Dan seconded John's motion to suspend the search for the town manager. All in favor? All opposed? So, John, would you like to revoke the ordinance as well?
No. I think we keep the ordinance in case at some time in the future we do decide to have a town manager.
So is that legal? That we have an ordinance for an open position but never advertise for it?
I mean, the ordinance created a position of town manager and it'll be up to the town council whether you're on that position.
Okay, it could, it could sit there open for years. So, okay. Suspend. Okay, I'm glad this employee handbook is next. So, the Employee Handbook Update Ordinance 2024 dash nine is next.
I make a motion to reject all proposed amendments to the employee handbook.
Again, can you explain why, John?
Only one council member took part. No other council member, including told the process is ongoing. The other reports asked for by any other town council member.
That is not a true statement, John. Gina has announced at this council meeting that she was updating the employee handbook with the latest laws, which is why we employ New Focus. We employ them as our HR consultants to update our handbook yearly with new laws. And that's what she did at the beginning of the year, is updated that handbook with the new laws. And she announced it to this council more than once about that. I don't understand what the, what the, I don't understand what the complaint is. That you didn't know, that you didn't hear her? Is that what it was?
No.
You're done? What do you mean you're done?
I'm done. Scared of the name.
Again, John, this is... Now we're going to be out of compliance with the law if we don't update our handbook with the new laws in the state of Indiana and the federal government. We've already incurred the expense because we asked them to update it.
We can start the process again with more council members present.
John, you have, you have had this handbook for months. You could have read it and provided your own comments. I, I told you several times during this council meeting, please call a New Focus and, and get your questions answered. Did you do that?
No.
So I don't understand, if you didn't call them to tell, to ask them questions and you're not willing to sign a handbook that has the new updated laws in it. I'm not, I, this does not compute. I do not understand why you would be making this decision. Why? Because you went consulted, but you were consulted. You were given the information. The fact that you didn't pick up the phone with any initiative to ask questions is not the council's fault, nor is it the fault of the employees at our town. They deserve updated laws.
Put it to the vote last day.
John, you're not making any sense. This is once again a waste of taxpayer dollars.
That's what I asked last time too.
Your flippant comments during this council meeting is unacceptable, John. John made a motion to, I don't know what this means, rescind this or never appear.
Reject.
Reject.
To propose amendments.
But you, you will, can you please say reject the amendments but still pay New Focus and let them close out their bill?
Yeah, we have to pay.
Thanks. John made a motion to reject, I don't even think this is legal, Andy. Do we not have to update our employee handbook with the laws from DOL?
Well, that was my next question. I think this was over. I was going to say, can somebody work with me to get it completed? At least what needs to be...
I'd be willing to, yes.
Now you really don't make any sense. You didn't look at it for two months and now you want to look at it with Gina? John, you've had that capability for two months at least. Does Andy, am I the only person that is confused here?
Regardless of whether or not you update your employee handbook, Gina's going to have to abide by the new rule. Regardless of whether or not the handbook's updated. The handbook should be updated to reflect what the law is, but she's going to be bound by that law regardless of what the handbook says because the law, the law governs.
So then why do we have a handbook at all? Is the question. Why do we have a handbook at all?
We have an employee handbook because there's a lot of stuff that the law doesn't discuss that, that, you know, that people need to have it laid out for their employees. It's not in the Indiana code or the United States code.
So we don't have an obligation to put the new laws in the handbook to ensure the employees understand?
I said, the handbook should be updated to reflect what the law is, but the law is going to govern regardless of whether or not the handbook's updated right now.
So really, this is just a disservice to our employees? Because we're not explaining what the law is to them? We're making them go into Indiana law and research it themselves.
I mean, I think, is this all about the Department of Labor thing with the over not exempt, non-exempt?
No, this was before, not before that.
I mean, I think anything that's not reflected in the employee handbook would need to be... I mean, I think anything that's not reflected in the employee handbook would need to be, when you do like an intake with a new employee, you need to make sure, hey, by the way, we haven't updated the handbook as of this yet, but this is what the rule is, this is what the law is. But yes, I think, I agree that the handbook should be updated. But regardless of whether or not the handbook's updated tonight, the town has to follow what the rules and what laws.
Gina, do you know how much we've paid New Focus for these amendments so far?
I haven't met the bill yet.
Cause we haven't approved it, I see. When that bill comes in, can you present that at the next meeting? It'll be on the claims, right?
So am I telling them to close this out?
Yes, you're telling them to close this out and let us pay the bill because we're not gonna approve this all year.
Well, I don't think that you need to close it out.
I don't either. I think you just owe it because I feel like you just need to get, accomplish what needs to be.
It sounds like, can it just be tabled? And maybe have someone from this company, this company that worked with Gina on this, come to the next meeting and explain to council what the changes were? It's a big document. I mean, and, and not everything was touched, I don't imagine.
I would like.
Not everything was touched, it was highlighted. I think the original.
Yeah, everything was highlighted, yeah.
I, I would like to start afresh.
What does that mean?
I would like to start new. I'd like to start completely anew.
So do you wanna use a different HR company?
No, we're used to saying.
I don't understand. They're not gonna start fresh? They've, they've been doing this handbook now for four years? So what does it mean to start fresh? Could you please explain that?
Start over with the amendments for our employee handbook.
Start over?
Yeah. That's the motion.
I wish you would have contacted them in the past two months so that we wouldn't be wasting our time and money, John. So, okay, I don't know what your motion is because at first you said reject. I said, can we pay the bill? And you said yes. Now you say no.
I would like to reject the current amendments to the employee handbook, start fresh and rewrite the amendments to the employee handbook.
From the.
The ones necessary by law.
And keep the bill open?
Yes.
Not pay them?
Yes.
Okay. Do you mind telling us how you're gonna do that so that we know what the timeline is?
Once Gina tells me when she wants to do it, I will tell all of the council. I will keep all council pressed every step of the way. And I will ask for their input all the time.
John made a motion to request the, uh, the Employee Handbook Ordinance 2024-9 as written and rewrite it, but keep the bill open. Um, is there a second? Dan seconded? All in favor? All opposed? Motion carried? Next is the volleyball fence in the lower town park.
Is that a fence or not? The fence.
Anybody wanna, can you explain that one? Are you, are you, can you explain that one?
That, the fence is there. That six-foot fence has fallen down. It's got big holes in it. The tickets are out, laying on the ground. And it needs to either be replaced or something. I don't know when, when the new park, parking is put in there, or they put a, a new fence up or some, I'd assume it's there to keep the balls from coming out of the parking lot and hitting cars.
Yes, I, I remember.
Rocky said Grant had some kind of deal with whoever was doing the volleyball that they would take care of the fence.
Right.
And they haven't taken care of nothing.
And I think that, uh, did you say something, Gina, about how somebody was contacted and they no longer are involved with the volleyball league? And so they don't really care what happens to the fence? Something like that?
Correct. So Rocky had reached out to the people that ran that league prior and they no longer have any interest in the league or it's no continuing. So as far as we know, there's no leagues anymore.
And I think at our last meeting, Rocky said he doesn't, it's okay with him to take, take it down? Okay.
I think we were just leaving it open. Somebody came forward and said, oh, take it down.
Is anyone here to speak on behalf of the volleyball fence in the lower park? No? Okay. Uh, entertain a motion then for the fence.
I made a motion that we had removed.
Rick made a motion to remove the volleyball fence in the lower town park. Is there a second?
Second.
John seconded? All in favor? All opposed? Motion carried? Next is the insurance renewal for our property and liability.
So I had asked Southeastern Jordan's to attend in case council had any questions about our renewal. I believe I had sent those, um, policies, the, the two you and the packet, and we may not have.
I just seen that, exactly.
Okay. But I, I, again, we did not do the solicitation this year since this was our second year. We did solicitation slash share with other agents. So Mrs. Our Renewal for this year, um, I've asked Andy and Erin to be here. They are our agents, representatives, and if you guys had any questions about the renewal itself.
Yes, I have a question. Um, can someone just explain why it went up thirteen thousand since last year? If you wanna come to the podium?
Sure. Would it be the one that's just sort of there?
Uh, sure, just.
Help some people?
Sure, just turn the mic on.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. We did receive a renewal premium worksheet showing expired, expired premiums and adjustments for the upcoming renewal term, eight sixteen twenty-four. I do show that there was a rate revision adjustment, but I don't show it's thirteen thousand. I show it's nine thousand two hundred and thirty-four dollars.
Oh, I did. I'm sorry. I added up all the policies together. Does that include the fireman's as well? Accident sickness that was said? Maybe I shouldn't include it, I don't know.
Yeah, so Erin is here with me. She's, I asked her to handle accident sickness. I don't, maybe Erin, if you wanna come up and.
Yeah, that may be the source. The problem is because the accident forgiveness is like thirty-two hundred dollars. But the difference in premium, it wasn't from anything from last year.
Sorry, I just have a total sheet that I do the premiums and the distribution. So when I total it all, I have to.
Okay, so maybe, maybe last year's didn't include that.
Correct.
Yeah, that's probably what it did, that's it.
I will tell you where the, the major changes were as far as the rates. Looks like on the property side, that was an adjustment, an additional two thousand three hundred eighty-one dollars. Uh, the general liability portion, one thousand five hundred ninety-eight. And where the biggest change was, was on the auto policy, uh, three thousand five hundred twenty-nine dollars. However, I think there has been some endorsements and changes, adding some different additional vehicles for the police department. So, you know, you're gonna have some variances, especially on a bush law due to that use and things like that.
And was that done when we got the two new vehicles or, cause we got, we already got rid of one?
No, this was for justice because it happens, this is for the renewal.
Oh, when, when does this start? I'm sorry.
August sixteenth.
Oh. So that means it's just one new vehicle?
I'd have to go back and look at all of our activity because I, I just know that there has been some changes on vehicles. Um, and very well the airway revision ever since post-COVID, insurance companies just continue to take away adjustments to deal with inflation.
Well, I just assume that those, the removal of the twenty-fourteen, we did receive a refund for the premium. And then also, we did pay a premium to add the two new vehicles. So I'm assuming those are already on this policy, current policy, not the renewal.
Correct. But when, when you do a change, it's gonna carry over to continuing term of the renewal?
So it could possibly still affect that?
Correct.
I mean, is there anything that we can do to reduce this that we aren't doing that you've been able to see?
From my years of experience, the only thing that I could recommend is, you know, maybe we look at, we're already carrying a five thousand dollar deductible on buildings. The vehicles, we could, we could look at maybe raising those deductibles a little bit. But in the current insurance, um, market that we're in, uh, it's just, it's one of those things that we have to deal with. Prop, commercial property, personal lines, everything just continues to go up under a series gas. The company we have you work with is a, uh, well-known specialty company that deals with municipalities. Uh, so I feel like the agency has you with the current company to do the best that you can for the town.
Okay, thank you. Anybody else have any questions? Uh, is there a motion to approve the EMC, IPAP, workers comp, cyber and fire, uh, insurance policies?
I made a motion that we approve the renewals.
Is there a second?
Second.
Dan seconded? All in favor? All opposed? Motion carried? Thank you both for coming.
You're welcome. And, and I'd like to say that I'm more than happy to, that if anyone wants to sit down and go over and find details outside of meetings such as this, I'm, I'm more than happy.
Great, thank you so much.
You're welcome.
Next is building permit number ten fifteen, Steve Fister. Tim?
Okay, I think it's, it's just a remodel, not, uh, not expanding the footprint of the home. Probably maybe you can use the electric in the walls, that's why it. It's basically a remodel, it's major remodel.
Okay, and this is for twenty-one West Tenth Street?
Yes.
It says, replacing rotted boards and walls, no increase in size on structure?
Yes.
Is there a, any questions? Is there a motion to approve?
I made a motion to approve the, uh, building permit number ten fifteen.
John made a motion to approve. Is there a second? Dan seconded? All in favor? All opposed? Motion carried? Next is building permit ten sixteen, Franklin County Welcome Center. This is at five forty-seven Main Street and it's for a new sign to be mounted perpendicular on the building on Main Street. So they do have a certificate of appropriateness from the Historic Preservation Commission. And so now they just need a building permit to mount this new sign, um, on the wall. This is all new hardware, right? There's nothing, a sign has never been on that building in this direction.
It was in a bonnie or something and where I think that Curtis is playing on using those, where the onyx attached, trying to use that, uh, that holds up if there's no vehicles. It has to be in the base where you can't be into brick, but, um, there, I don't know that there is a sign. It looks like it's probably not.
Um, any, any questions or entertain a motion? Oh, I'm sorry, Tim, are you good?
Yes, it's fine.
Okay.
Are things okay with Pam? Are things okay with, uh, just for preservation?
Yes. Is there a motion to approve?
I made a motion to approve. I also want to say, I'm glad you guys are on Main Street. I really appreciate that.
Yeah, we're, we're happy to be there instead of a nicer, uh, more visible location.
Yes.
John made a motion to approve, uh, building permit ten sixteen for the Welcome Center. New sign. Is there a second?
Second.
Dan seconded? All in favor? All opposed? Motion carried? Next is building permit ten seventeen, Jordan Bonhardt. This is for three forty-nine East Eighth, Eighth Street. This is for siding, front door, updating electric on plumbing, replacing joists and drywall, remodel the interior. Oh, did he just buy this?
Yes. Uh, it's a, it's major overhaul.
Right. Is he gonna get rid of the tree? Nothing.
Sheep.
Sheep, oh, I'm sorry. Okay, are there any issues?
I'm sorry.
Are there any issues with it?
No, it, it'll be a welcome change.
Any questions or a motion to approve, uh, Jordan Bonhardt?
I made a motion to approve.
John made a motion to approve. Is there a second?
Second.
Rick seconded? All in favor? All opposed? Motion carried? Gina, I'm gonna cross this out. They, they input twenty twenty-four on this, on the expiration date.
Okay, thanks.
Next is building permit ten eighteen for Earl Sawyer at fifty-two West Eleventh Street. Looks like he's replacing the old deck with screen and porch and adding electric.
This is kind of just a remodel of, of the deck, or the, the porch, it was already there. Except he's wanted to put a screen around and also I believe we could say there would be some electrical or porch. Uh, that's the reason they put it up there.
Is this in the back of the house or the front?
This is on the, uh,
I feel like it's on the back based on the drawing.
This is on the side. It's on the west side. It's, it's on the, it's on the west side. I face the numbers for him. It's not.
It's not the front porch?
No, you can be second guessing here for a second.
Well, it's hard to figure out from that.
Yeah, it's on the west side of the house.
Okay. Uh, is there a motion to approve?
I made that motion.
John made a motion to approve application ten eighteen for Earl Sawyer. Is there a second? Dan seconded? All in favor? All opposed? Motion carried? Next is ordinance twenty twenty-four dash fourteen, establishing McCalla Foundation Grant Fund.
This is just an ordinance. I can put the grant funds on my account ledger.
This is, uh, establishes the AMX Grant Fund for the purpose of receiving funds and proper according to Community Grant Committee and Board of Trustees. Is there a motion to approve?
I made a motion that we suspend the.
Suspend the rules, yeah. John made a motion to suspend the rules, uh, so we can pass this ordinance at its first reading. Is there a second?
I have a question. When did we ever get a sports contract?
Pardon?
When did we ever get a sports class?
I'm sorry.
When did we ever get a sports class?
When did we ever get a sports class? I don't, I don't know.
Oh, you know, we're giving grants and stuff for, it was on this one. You know, for pickleball, for, I don't know the waiver. So how do we do that?
Yeah, the, uh, the, the project was approved in the help strategic plan back in September. Uh.
I just, I mean, they came and asked for, I don't think we voted for that day.
Yeah, so the, like I said, the strategic, I think it was called the Strategic Investment Plan?
Yeah.
That was the culminating event, I believe it was in September of 23.
We were still at the Shown Center, I believe, it might have been one of your first.
I don't think, I don't think you're getting that.
Yeah. That's when all the...
Well, I guess I'm opposed to taking money for something. The way I understand it, it's just a grant, a group of grants and your money that we can spend a year from there.
Well, the Help Program was really a community-based program where each recipient actually engaged the community to find out what projects they were interested in having in their community, and so there were several different engagements on different levels with different topics. And so that program was supposed to help people kind of know how to engage with the community, and then figure out all the different ways that you could apply for grant money for your project. Even if your project was something small, there's all kinds of different smaller type grants that are out there. So that's what that program was all about, is bringing the community in to make them feel like they're more part of the decisions. And so that happened all in 2023. And so the end result was this plan that was produced in conjunction with the county that both the county approved and so did the town. And so that's where all the projects came from. So the program was that. And then if you participated in that program with the county, which we did, then Oprah then granted us $333,000 to use for these projects on top of the $560,000 that we got from ARPA Money. So all that together was that 580, uh, 800 and some, for all the projects.
We deemed the pickleball project as one of those.
Yes, in that, in that plan, yeah, that's, it was outlined in that plan. Any other questions about the grant from McCalla? Good? Are you... Okay, John made a motion to suspend the rules, so we can approve this ordinance on the first reading, is there a second?
Second.
Rick seconded, all in favor? All opposed? So we'll have to push this to the next meeting, Gina? Motion did not pass, so we can't vote on the ordinance, so... We'll have to do the second reading at our next meeting. Okay. Next is ordinance 2024-15, which is the Franklin County Zoning Code Amendment. So this is another ordinance, so we'll have to amend the rules if you want to approve it the first time. So the APC presented this to commissioners at their last meeting for two changes on landscape screening, and that is they created a third level of screening, just in the general property zone, and then they applied that third level to the Commercial and Intermediate Energy System Code, which is for commercial solar applications. So this is just, it's just a higher, more stringent level at 10 feet, let's see, not less than 10 feet in height and a strip of landscape 10 feet wide. It's just the third level that the APC can apply to different applications. Any questions on this?
I made a motion to suspend rules.
John made a motion to suspend the rules to approve this ordinance at the first reading, is there a second?
Second.
Rick seconded, all in favor? All opposed?
Abstaining.
You can't, I mean...
Yeah, I can't.
What does that mean, if he abstains, does that mean we can keep going, or?
I think this suspend the rules requires the...
You know.
...be announced every year.
Okay. So we will put that on next week's agenda, Gina?
Okay.
One of them.
Now, does that apply to here in town, or just in the county areas where they want to do this solar?
It applies in town, because we, years ago, we adopted, we said that we would follow their code. And so if we adopt this, this is just, we have been adopting all their codes that they have brought to us for many, many years. So this does apply to everyone in town as well. Unless we don't, I mean, I guess we can not adopt it and then create our own. Andy, is that how that works?
Is it just commercial? I mean, you've got some houses here in town that has them on a variety of roofs.
This says Commercial and Intermediate Energy System Code, which means like solar farms. It's commercial solar, it's commercial energy, I guess it could be windmills, but it's solar. But the level also applies to just the general zoning code as well. So I guess they could apply it to other properties as well. I think they would have that option. It's just, it was also added into the energy zone, which is the reason, I think the reason why they made it is to make, to give them more, more options to enact for any new solar farms. Okay, so Gina, if you can put that on next, next week's. Next is lowering the speed limit to 25 on St. Mary's Road. So I got another call, I found the same citizen who said that when we took up the speed, numbered signs, or the speed, what do you call those? The light that tells you where the speed is, when we took those out, the vehicles began speeding again. And so I asked Assistant Chief Straight to look into it, he did, he came back, and he's like, they didn't, he did not see the speeding that was seen by the citizen, and I asked him what his suggestion might be, if he had any, on what else we possibly could do, and he suggested maybe switching that sign that's 30 miles an hour as you go west out of St. Mary's Road. It says 30 on the, as you're heading west, on this side it says 30 miles an hour, but then when you're coming in east, it says 25. And he's like, well, maybe if you change this 30 to 25, maybe that might help, because he said the people that he pulled over going west said, oh, I was just getting ready to go 30. So that was his only suggestion, so I thought I'd bring that to the council to see what you guys thought.
And did Rocky put the strips down?
Strips?
I thought, I heard a conversation about the strips being put down.
Well, he hasn't gotten a quote yet for the rumble strips, the ones that when you go over it makes a noise.
Yeah.
I'm not sure where he's at on that, but he hasn't, maybe he hasn't found anybody to give us a quote.
And you want to make both signs say 25 in each direction?
I don't, that was a suggestion, I thought if you guys wanted to...
Where would that start at? I mean, like over by the... On the other side of the cemetery, would it start there?
Well, there's, there's actually, right at the cemetery, well, at the cemetery, there's, when you, when you come in from the country inn, there's a, we have a pole that says 25 miles an hour, and literally right across the street, as you're headed the opposite direction out, it says 30. And so he was suggesting this one just kind of matched what the other one is, that's kind of it.
So, over the last couple of months, I sent officers over there consistently running radar, consistently if anyone that was speeding, to make sure that we were pulling them over, talking with them, finding out what's going on here. I had Mike go over, do a survey over the last several weeks. He came and reported back to me that there was not an issue. The officers that I have spoken to, and I have personally sat over there and run radar, I have personally sat over there, I went over and spoke with the individual. I don't know what more we can do, we do not see the problem that he sees. We do not live there day in and day out. But if you've got 100 people that go through there, or four or five people speed, that's not a problem. If you're constantly speeding, then that's a problem. We've been hours and hours and hours on this. Now, when I had that discussion with Mike, the only alternative, if you guys wanted to do something, would be to just make the whole speed limit over there 25, so there isn't any differential there. I don't even know if that'll do anything, I'll be honest with you. I just think the officer's presence, everybody knows that what we're doing, it seems like they're complying. I've got a lot of feedback from people that live in the county that lives out on St. Mary's Road, and they said, you guys are hammering that, everybody's talking about, everybody's slowing down. So I don't know if you're ever going to, I don't think we can make everybody happy. That's just the true fact of it. I think we've done a good job over there. If you want to lower those speed limit signs, maybe that'll work. But if that doesn't work, then what are you gonna do? And then if that goes and that doesn't work, what are you gonna do? Maybe there isn't actually that big of a problem.
Did the radar actually work? I mean, what was the feedback on that?
So, we don't know yet, we have the radars in a box in the town right now, and I've asked, I've told the LTAC, because we're only allowed to keep them for a month, and I told her we're finished, and she's like, good, it's been a month, and so she's gonna, she has to pick them up and take them back to her wherever she works, and then she has to download the data, and then she'll give it to us.
They will actually count the number of cars, and then how many was going over the street?
I think...
And give you a percentage.
I think something like that, I mean, I've never seen it before, but it's something like that.
Another one's, they have them in Oxford, coming into Oxford, they have a couple of them. And I don't, I don't know, I stick to it, me myself, but I don't know if they still have them. They used to have the bigger units, now they have some that just mounted like on telephone poles. But it seems, it gets my attention when I come into town, I know that.
I think another issue, when I see there's bushes over there, shrubs, and when, where his house is sitting in the corner area, it's not a very good place when you gotta back out anyway. And there's some issues there for, as far as distance-wise, when people, when they're traveling, seeing him backing out or his wife. So there is a little bit of stuff there where you cut back the shrubs, maybe a little bit, trim them down, maybe there. But we're gonna consistently still go over and still do the radar and so forth. I think it's gotten a lot better, and I told him I was gonna check back with him two or three weeks, which is about the time that I need to go back over there and see his complaints. I know we spoke about putting a car in the driveway area there. I'm just thinking continually doing radar in different spots where everybody knows that we're not, and they're checking, really kind of slowing that down now, so I think it's a lot better, so.
Has anybody spoke to the gentleman over there?
Yeah, I did.
You know, did he say that the mother signs was open?
He did. He did, and then we took him down and said it started, but I mean, I'm very comfortable with changing the one that's 30 to 25, just at least to match the other side of the road. And I'm also really comfortable with those rumble strips, if we can ever get a quote, just, I would just like to do something outward to let the residents know that we are doing something that will be permanent, and so that's, that's an app. I hope the rumble strips are reasonably cost, I just, I think it'd be a great, great thing to do once we get the quote. That's just me.
Another one's over by the high school, they get your attention when you run over them. I know they don't want them that big over there because of the noise.
Yeah.
But they get your attention.
So does anyone have a motion for the speed limit sign for now?
I made a motion to give it to 25.
John moves to change the sign from 30 to 25, is there a second?
Second.
Rick seconded, all in favor? All opposed, motion carried? Okay, next is council approval prior to spending taxpayer money or submitting grant applications.
I would like Andy to, when he has time. Work on any grant, Lord, this states, any grant application that would require matching funds from the town may not be submitted until submission of said grant application has been approved by town council. Also, no council member may spend tax money without prior approval by town council. This does not involve department managers.
Can you read the second one one more time?
No council member may spend tax money without prior approval by town council. This does not involve department managers.
I hate to keep asking this, John, but is that, can you, can you tell me why, why this is necessary for our business, for the town?
I feel that one council member consistently does things without informing the rest of the council.
Can you give an example?
The traffic counters at the town park.
Yes.
That's my, and there's more, but...
Let's, let's have another one, about, because the ordinance you want is about applications approval. So are you saying that, clearly, I have applied for grants without the council's approval?
I just want that there, so...
Has that happened?
I want it there, so it does not happen.
But it hasn't happened, so now you're creating ordinances, spending taxpayer dollars on things that aren't an issue?
Is it yours or the council's, is it a secret grant you're working on?
Pardon, I'm sorry, I did not understand you.
My understanding is that sort of, which I have more questions about doing off course, are they used, are secret grant agents you're working with? Is there a tiered balance?
No.
Okay.
Then why didn't you tell any council members what they're for when you rest?
Because you are disrespectful and sarcastic.
He wasn't, ask why!
And I told you, John, that I will not engage you if you're going to be sarcastic and unprofessional with me, so I'm not going to do it.
That's why we're getting the ordinance.
So you're gonna waste taxpayer dollars on something that has never happened, that is not an issue?
It is an issue.
John, you're not making, again, you're not making any sense, it's not an issue.
See if there's a second, can you, but, second.
You guys are not making any sense at all.
I don't.
What's the part about council members may not spend money without the council?
I don't really like you saying that about me.
It doesn't make sense to me.
Well, I'm sorry, it doesn't make sense to me, and makes sense, and you're not engaging for sense. And please refrain from saying that to me, about me, and about you.
It's important that we have communication with each other.
It's all over, I say more.
If I don't understand something, I'm saying that it doesn't make sense to me, could you help explain it, so it does make sense?
Doesn't.
Because you're not really explaining it.
Again, not everything will make sense to me.
But you could try.
Well, you did.
When?
People tell us.
When did you try?
And I even got in on John and said, why, and you didn't respond to me either. And so, and now we've heard that it's some kind, you have said that it's a secret project for a grant.
I have never said it's a secret project for a grant, I don't.
I will tell. What's for? Why were they there?
I saw the list of free equipment from LTAC, and I saw the speed signs, and I thought, hey, let's see if we can get those, and I saw the traffic counters, because I thought it would be very interesting to find out how many people go in our park. I really wanted to find out how many people go in the park for Wonderland. I thought that maybe having that number might help in a grant, I don't have a grand idea, I just thought, I don't even know if these things are going to work, we got them, it slipped my mind.
You got them, we did.
They came to the town with the speed signs. And it slipped my mind. Can you please explain why the council member may not spend money without the council, what is that about? Who do you think, what council member do you think has ever spent taxpayer dollars without the council's approval? Do you think that, do you know what Gina's job is, is to make sure that every expenditure is approved? It falls into the purchasing policy of our town? Do you think she somehow didn't do one?
I don't understand Gina.
You see, John, you see the claims every single, every two weeks, you see every single claim. Do you see any claim on there that you would find to be controversial?
And it's out there.
I'm trying to figure out why. Do the people not deserve to know why you're making this motion? This doesn't...
I have stated that you're the only one there that has an burden.
I don't understand it. There is, there is, there is an elected official whose job is to make sure that we don't spend...
I can't help you if you're not understanding.
Is it possible for me to be able to read that here? I'm sorry, I didn't write all the... I'm sorry, I didn't write all the, all down.
It's not an issue.
No, it's just what I want him to work with.
John made a motion to, or Andy to create a motion about something about applicant, grant applications must be approved by the council first, I think is what it said, but I'm not allowed to see it. And in addition, the ordinance has to say something to the effect that council members may not spend money without the council approval.
I second it.
Uh, Dan seconded the motion. Um, all in favor? All opposed? Motion carried. Next on the list is rules for semi overflow parking lot.
I'm next for that, just simply because if you don't have to, I mean, there's no room for any, there's trucks, there must be eight tent for every filling. And I understand that you're missing some down. But my concern is there's also cars with flat tires and expired lighting plates, there's cars working out of off streets, and all those things down there, it's not the intent. And then on Fourth Street, we have a semi parking street, probably goes through over. So my, my question was, is, is it workable? I mean, we've got this for a long time. We've got a buildings bill put in there around the business town. Should we have rules stating limited time, you know, some guidelines? Not that you can't use them, some guidelines for what needs to be followed in that area.
So Dan, I don't know if you remember, but you already brought this up once, and the whole council was wholeheartedly agreed with you that we need to establish something. And I said to you, hey, I would love to work with you on what the, what rules you think that we need to do. I don't mind writing up the policy, and I haven't heard a word from you since until today.
I'll talk.
Okay. Thanks.
No, I mean, if people, if people don't agree, I don't, I mean...
I just, I, I...
I'm down and writing down what you can't...
I completely agree with you.
I agree with you.
Right, Andy, you couldn't leave the compost spot if you wanted to, because there's semis parked outside the trailer for a grant for them.
I would, like I said the last time you brought this up, I look forward to working with you to figure out what kind of rules would make sense so that that place is more safe and it's what we need it to be. I just don't know what that is.
Thank you.
Next is the OKRA letter for the local income survey.
Is there some kind of signs or anything we can put down there that would rule?
Yeah, that'd be great.
I mean, is, is that what we're after, Dan?
That'd be...
Like a kind of sign or something with the basic rundown?
I mean, it doesn't have to say a lot.
I know, I know exactly what you're talking about, because there's like two of them, I believe, right now parked right in front of that compost. Maybe a sign or something, something that you have a leg to stand up on if you've got to deal with.
Well, we'll have to get Andy involved if it's going to be something we stand on, so it'll have to be something informed.
Well, you know, if it's, if they're bringing the rules, Terry can go down, sign them or whatever.
Yep, absolutely.
And we don't have to get Andy involved, not to talk to that much.
So next is the OKRA letter for the local income survey. So one of the reasons why the town of Brookfield has been able to get grants from OKRA over the past several years is because our low to moderate income level has been above 50, which has, it's always been 51. And that's what makes us eligible for OKRA grants. And at this point in time, the American Community Survey has dropped, uh, the new set of numbers on their website and their new analysis. And the town of Brookfield has now dropped to 44%, which means we're no longer eligible for OKRA grants. And so there is one option that municipalities can do, uh, to convince OKRA that the ACS survey is not, uh, to be relied on, and that is to do our own local survey. But first, we have to get OKRA to agree that we have certain reasons why the town of Brookfield, we think, um, should qualify and will be above that 50% mark if we do a local survey. So this letter is, um, trying to convince OKRA to allow us to do the survey, because if OKRA agrees to this, to letting us do the survey, and the survey comes back at above 50%, that means for the next five years, they will allow us to get, continue to apply for OKRA grants. If however, the local survey comes back below 50%, we're basically out of, out of, uh, schlitz for five years or until the next ACS survey comes out. Uh, so this is really our only hope, our last hope, to, um, be able to do that. Uh, I talked with Mary McCarty, and, uh, she would administer the survey, and she said the cost would be minimal, would be postage, uh, basically, but part of the survey is a random survey, and she's going to be required to get a certain amount of people to respond. And so some people don't respond via mail or email. And so it might mean that we have to go door to door or track some people down just to submit their survey. I'm not sure exactly how that's going to work, but she might need, um, the town to help get those responses in. Uh, so she needs her quota of whatever number that is, and that's only if OKRA approves this. Um, so I am asking on behalf of future OKRA grants that we approve this letter and give it to, um, SERPCY, uh, to coordinate with OKRA to start this income survey. Um, this can be done in conjunction with the preparations that are already being done to, to apply for the strategic, uh, the comprehensive planning grant that redevelopment wants to do. Uh, they, SERPCY has agreed to do both at the same time, because they're pretty confident that this is going to come, this survey is going to come back, um, with more than 50%. And so that's good for us. And so they said they would just continue both projects in preparation to apply for that, um, comprehensive planning grant, I think in September. So I just ask that the council, um, approve that I sign this letter.
I made a motion we approve the letter.
John made a motion to approve the letter. Is there a second?
Second.
Rick seconded, all in favor? All opposed? Motion carried. Next is the preserving Main Street grant defect letters. So, um, in the preserving Main Street grant, as the contractors have gone through the buildings and have made, uh, wonderful changes, they have found that there are certain items inside the buildings that is not covered by the grant, but is the responsibility of the property owner. And if the property owner does not fix these said defects, it will affect the work that the contractor has done, um, as part of the preserving Main Street grant. And most of it is just leaking, uh, water leaking in. And so, uh, they have told the, the property owners about these issues verbally, but they recommended, as did Ratio, that we, um, put these, uh, issues in writing so that everyone is aware of what the responsibilities of the homeowner is and what we have found, uh, so that if something does happen and they end up having to tear the siding off or something, a window falls out, um, that at least we have, let them know that that was their responsibility when it happened. So these letters are just formally informing the property owners of the issues, and we're just asking them to sign it so that we have receipt that they do want, at least have a copy of it.
I made a motion we approve the letters.
And this is for 300 Main Street and 301 Main Street?
On the 300 Main, I was at a HBC meeting, we use that, and, uh, Zach Ward had brought up a question of the process of how they was putting on the, the vapor bearing. And you said you was going to discuss it at whatever next meeting. Did you discuss that and what did they find out? Did it, because I seen where they went on, they're carrying on with the siding on it, so...
Yeah, I did. And that's, that's why this letter's being written, because, um, there is no issue with the installation of the Hardy board and the thingy.
Yeah, plastic, the OSB board.
That is, is in complete compliance with the manufacturer's recommendation, and they can prove that by what's on the website and how to install the stuff. Um, the problem is that if there's water that leaks in between there, then you have the problem with the Hardy board. And that's where they wanted to make sure that the property owners knew, if you don't fix this leak and that water gets in there, this, it's going to affect the siding and then do exactly what Zach and Curtis were talking about. Um, so that's exactly why this letter was written, I know for sure. I don't know about this one. They didn't bring anything up with this one, so...
But this was the only one that I heard.
Yeah.
Motion.
So I'll entertain a motion to approve both letters. John made a motion to approve both letters. Is there a second?
Second.
Rick seconded, all in favor? All opposed? Motion carried. Last is police department new hire for, uh...
I'm asking the, uh, town council to approve Caleb York. He's a graduate from Union County High School, has a socia's degree in criminal justice, and he's a jail officer with the Franklin County Sheriff's Department. I think he'd be a great addition to the, or police department, so I'm asking your approval to, uh, hire.
I think it's a lot. Sorry, I was...
Yeah. Yeah, it works, though, one short. Uh, offer goes there.
So he is hired, have, has, has the police, have you agreed to give him any, uh, non-paid time off after his start date?
He's not, uh, requested or brought that to my attention during the process of, uh, a hiring process, so no.
So if, if he does request that, would you put that in the offer letter so that we're all aware of what, what you agreed to?
Yes.
Thank you.
Make a motion we approve the new hire.
John made a motion to approve the new hire, uh, for the police department. Is, is there a second?
Thank you.
Dan seconded, is there any discussion?
No.
All in favor? All opposed? Motion carried. And Gina, if, if there is unpaid, unpaid time off, can you just send us the offer letter? Otherwise, we, I don't, I don't think anybody cares to see it.
Yeah.
Thanks. Um, I just have two things. One is Gina found a... Sorry. Uh, Gina was emailed a offer, uh, for a free cybersecurity clinic that's done by, uh, people at Indian University, and they do it pro bono, and they're looking for people to apply to be a client of theirs, for them to look into our information systems and let us know if there's any vulnerabilities or anything that we need to do, or some procedures we need to know about to make us and the information of our residents more safe. Um, and so I would like to ask the council if I can go ahead and apply to be a client. I'm not sure, you know, if they take a certain number and then everybody else goes to the wayside, but, uh, this is a pro bono thing, so we don't have to pay for anything.
I made that motion.
Uh, John made a motion, uh, to approve me applying to be a client, uh, and if I would get it, I'll let everybody know. Um, is there a second?
Second.
Rick seconded, all in favor? All opposed? Motion carried? Thank you. And the last thing is that, um, our website admini, he's not a website administrator, he's the website developer, I don't know, Matt Shiger. Uh, he found, uh, some issues with the, uh, scripts on our website, on the, uh, on the visitors page. For some reason, all of our, uh, places that we recommend to people to go visit, there's supposed to be a map there, and it's not appearing on the map. And he said because the scripts on the page haven't been updated in quite some time, because WordPress updated and they no longer communicate. So he recommended that he delete that portion of it and just reinstall it, and he said it would, he thinks he can get it done in about an hour or so, and that's $85 an hour. Um, but if that doesn't work, he would let us know and say, this is going to take a little longer and it's going to cost this much to fix. So I would like, uh, the council to approve that so that he can fix it.
I made that motion.
John made a motion to approve Matt Shiger for 85 or somewhere around there to fix the website. Is there a second? Dan seconded, all in favor? All opposed? Motion carried? Thank you. And that's all I have. Does anybody have anything else? No? Members of the public, would you like a moment to come to that? Okay. With no further business to come before the board, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
I make that motion.
John motion to adjourn. Is there a second?
Second.
Rick seconded, all in favor? All opposed? Motion carried. Meeting's adjourned. Thank you so much for coming.